Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Madrone excused this evening. So I do just want to mention that we are under a weather advisory this evening. And so for those who are watching at home or who are participating in the meeting via Zoom, we may lose the ability to broadcast or be on Zoom if in the event that we lose power. Obviously, we do have a generator here at City Hall, but that will still impact our ability to broadcast and join, have folks join by Zoom. So with that, I do just want to mention that we have an amendment to the agenda. We've added item 4G to the agenda, which is an approval of an ordinance amending the 2025 Regular Ad Valorem Tax Ordinance 7409 on first and final reading. So with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So we do not have any special recognition this evening, so we will move on to public comment. It looks like we have one person signed up in chambers this evening to speak, and that is Mr. Alan Rose. Just a few housekeeping items as you approach the podium. You have two minutes for your comments, and there is a clock to my right, to your left there on the wall, and your green, yellow, and red lights indicating that you have two minutes of time for your comments.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Alan Rose. I am one of the organizers of the Olympia Funk Festival. We started a nonprofit this year called the Ecstatic Sound Collective to run the funk festival here in the city of Olympia. I am here to talk about the LTAC funding. I had heard today while I was at work that there was a recommendation for our funding for the Olympia Funk Festival and that it came in a little bit lower than we were hoping. And I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the strengths of the Olympia Funk Festival. We are, it's a three-day festival that runs January 31st through February 2nd. We have three nights in the hotels downtown. The Doubletree is fully booked. We have others staying in the town suites and other overflow properties in town. We are renting the Olympia Center, the Capitol Theater, and the Olympia Ballroom. So there is, we're paying full expense for that. Currently, the event is half sold, so we're excited about that. Let's see. I just want to say that one of the main strengths of the festival is, as the curator of the lineup, I make arrangements with the agents for the bands to not play in Seattle and Portland. They are all coming here, and that's, we have 11 bands flying in here. It really does a number on our budget, and we did so well last year, we're hoping for another strong year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rose, and good to see you. You too, Marnie. So any questions or comments from today? It's Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, and I act as the Chair of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for the City Council, and we had a really robust discussion. In fact, I told the committee that I believe Funk Fest will someday be the biggest festival in downtown Olympia. You're really on track, and you're doing great things with improving names year over year and growing the festival. So I'm excited about it. So if people are listening, you know Funk Fest is a new nonprofit in town, so if you like music festivals, they have contribution opportunities. Unfortunately, the way the lodging tax works, the City Council can only say yes or no to the whole recommendation as a package. So that committee's work is done unless the council says no, and then the committee would be able to take another stab at it. So this year was our, for people that are listening, you might already know, we had 30 applications. It was our largest ever, and we, as you'll see in a little while from Mike Reed, we go down to $200,000 in our reserve almost so that we can award over $1 million in LTAC funding. And if it were just me, you would have been fully funded.
May I respond?
That's not what we do here at this point, so thank you for being here tonight for me.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we will move on to adoption of the consent calendar. I am being told in my ear that, to remind you to feel free to email us if you have additional comments you'd like to share with us. Yes. So we will move on to adoption of the consent calendar, and I am tracking that we have one request for approval, item 4F, which is the approval of an ordinance repealing OMC 2.38, Police Auditor and Replacing the Chapter with the City Council Approved Recommendations from the Social Justice and Equity Commission for the Role of the Civilian Police Auditor. And here to speak to this item to explain the ordinance is our Assistant City Manager, Stacy Ray. Hi, Stacy.
Good evening. Thank you. For the record, I'm Stacy Ray, Assistant City Manager. So thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly to this consent item tonight. So staff recommended that it be polled, just for a brief explanation of what's in front of you for action. The issue is whether or not to approve the repeal and replacement of OMC 2.38, which is the chapter of the code that addresses the hiring, the role, and responsibilities of the civilian police auditor. So the original chapter was adopted by City Council in 2002. So, and in July, if you recall, Council approved recommendations from the Social Justice and Equity Commission on expanding the scope of the civilian police auditor and the establishment of a seven-member community policing board. So I won't go into extensive detail tonight, but just briefly, if I were to talk about or summarize kind of that expanded scope of the auditor, it has so much to do with expanding the auditor's work with engaging with that board and also engaging with the community and providing more information and outreach to the community as well. So tonight's actions to update the code language, again, that addresses the auditor. The code updates to establish the board will come in front of you probably first quarter next year. So tonight, this update is really just around the auditor's role and responsibilities and the hiring process. So given the changes that were needed to implement the recommendations, it's because it's been so long since this one's been updated, it was, we're recommending a full repeal and replace. So you had the original code in your pocket and then also the proposed replacement. The City Council Community Livability and Public Safety Committee approved staff's recommendation and said, go ahead and forward this to the full council, and if you approve adoption of the updated code language tonight, the next steps would include launching the requests for proposals for an auditor and looking at doing that by the end, was potentially very soon, the end of November, and closing the recruitment around the end of December. The auditor is one of the positions that's selected by the City Council, so staff would work with you and also, according to the recommendations from the commission, some community involvement from the community policing board, or if the board, the board might not be established yet, some other community member involvement, to conduct the process for evaluating proposals, conducting the interviewing, and then selecting the auditor. And we'd probably do all of that in that January to early February timeframe. So in summary, just again, tonight, the request is to repeal and replace OMC Chapter 2.38 related to Police Auditor and replace it with updated language that is in alignment with what was recommended from the Social Justice and Equity Commission.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Questions or comments for Stacy? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. I have a really basic question because I was flipping through it again as you were talking, and I wanted to make sure that we meant, so in the part about education for the position, it says a law degree or relevant social science degree. Do we need someone to be in good standing with the bar if they have a law degree, or do we just want a law degree?
I'm going to defer, okay.
I think the proper answer is that you'd like to have somebody who isn't suspended. So yes, they should be in good standing with the bar.
So would that be a protocol in the hiring process, or should the code say that?
I would put that in the code. It can be done by amendment on second reading.
That, perfect. Thank you. That's all my questions.
It's a great addition. Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Any additional questions or comments?
I was, I had caught that, too, the social science. My other question would be, I can't remember in the process, this is a memory thing, is the CLIPS, the Community Livability, going to be involved in any part of this RFP besides the commission and the community work group?
I'm going to defer to Assistant City Manager Debbie Sullivan.
Thank you for that question. The Chair of the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee has reviewed the RFP and provided comments to me, and that is our Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I was just talking about when you start getting in, you know, those requests and the applications, are we going to be using and leveraging that subcommittee at all in this process?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's, that was what I was hoping you would say.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's consent calendar. Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor of the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to our first business item this evening, item 6A, which is approval of a resolution stating the intention to change the Olympia Parking and Business Improvement Area Assessment Rate and setting time and place for a hearing on such rate change. And presenting this evening is Mike Reed, the city's Economic Development Director. Hi, Mike.
Greetings, Council. Again, for the record, my name is Mike Reed. I'm the Economic Development Director. We actually pulled these slides out. You're going to see these very briefly in the budget balancing presentation that City Manager Bernie will be giving at the end of the night, but we wanted to pull this out so we could have a little more conversation concerning this. So at the last Parking Business Improvement Area Advisory Council meeting, they not only approved their budget, but they took one step further, and I alluded this in that they could be doing this in a previous council meeting. What they are wanting to do is use 2025 to really put the PBIA program sort of under the microscope. So we first passed an ordinance creating the Parking Business Improvement Area in 2005, and in that original ordinance, there was a condition, a sunset, sort of a sunset clause in there, that said you had to come back in five years to the council to renew the program. Well, they came back in 2010, and at that time, council said, you don't need to come back anymore. And so we just removed the sunset clause from the Parking Business Improvement Area program. From a best practice standpoint, most business improvement areas have some sort of a recertification or a sunset or even a renewal built or baked into them. We don't have that in our current ordinance. So your Parking Business Improvement Area said, next year, it's 20 years of the program. It's a really good time to have that conversation. And when I'll, next slide, we'll get into kind of the parts of that, that piece. But with it came this idea that if we're going to do something different with the program next year, we're going to have to fund it differently. So the idea being, let's use our reserves, which they've actually built to a nice amount. They have about 85,000, we think, in year-end reserves. Typically, they only use about 80,000 a year, 80,000 to 90,000 a year in terms of what their funding amount would be. So their desire was, in next year, with the intention of having this reexamination of the program be the focus of the program, allow the ratepayers to participate in that without receiving invoices for payment in the mail, and also preserve the staff capacity that supports the PBIA to go exclusively towards this effort of engaging the stakeholders in a larger process. So what you can see on the screen is that they are proposing moving to a zero rate for 2005. That means we wouldn't have to do the invoicing as we normally do and identify ratepayers and all of this, which is actually a pretty labor-intensive process the way that we've currently set it up. As mentioned, our fund balance is 85,000. This is what they would look at, the, from a budget standpoint. It would be a zero revenue with a $60,000 expense. They anticipated 30,000 for maybe some consultant assistance, meeting facilitation, synthesizing feedback, and so on and so forth. They did want to set 30,000 aside for if a downtown beautification project or placemaking project did emerge that they wanted to act upon. They did have some budget dollars, and then they did want to keep some in reserves so that if they decided in 2026 to move forward with a new program, they weren't starting from a zero number, they had something in the bank to sort of start them with. So when we talk about what this 2025 would look like, it would be really focused on these primary areas. Having a conversation with the rateholders and a stakeholder engagement, listening sessions, maybe a series of them, some outreach, some surveys, but asking the question, is PBIA in its current form still the effective tool to meet the needs of the downhold ratepayer, downtown ratepayers? So what, questions about what's the role of the advisory board? Do they act more like a lodging tax advisory board, which is looking at sort of a fund advisory and how you evaluate proposals? Or is it a business advisory to council? Is it, what's the ratepayer and rate makeup? As I'd mentioned previously, we haven't changed the rates since 2005, so the rates have actually remained the same while inflation has continued to expand upon that point. We also, the program right now is based off of businesses being the ratepayers. You saw previously a proposal that came through to create a new downtown improvement district that was focused on property owners. So having that conversation, maybe we should switch to that. Could there be some benefits or there? Looking at how fee collection works, what are the priorities and spending? How does the administration of the management work? And then ultimately, how would you execute some of those projects? The PBIA Board did not want to charge ratepayers while going through this. They thought that it actually may add a layer of complexity to some of the conversations. Some people going, I don't want to pay this current bill, so I'm going to dunk the whole program. So let's just turn the volume down on, on that sort of pressure. Couple of things that I also want to note that they also did in that meeting. They voted, as you can see in that budget, there's no flower baskets. They unanimously said, we're not going to do flower baskets next year, which is kind of a staple of what PBIA has done. Typically, flower baskets, it's about a $7,000 expenditure for the actual baskets, and then you have to have somebody water and maintain them for the six months that they're there. That's about another, you know, that could be another $40,000 to fully maintain and water those. So they just said, we won't, we're not, we're not going to do that next year. Let's just focus on the task at hand. So we presented this, I presented this to Finance Committee last night. Finance Committee said, yes, we understand, we can be supportive of this, but there is some direction back to myself and the city manager to explore, hey, could we still find a way to do the flower baskets? Because that is a conversation that will emerge once it sort of gets out. So we've gotten that clear direction that that is something to explore on how we could maybe find some other funding sources or even look at that as some of their placemaking budget that they've even set aside. So what, what's in front of you tonight is a resolution that notifies the ratepayers that we are contemplating changing the rate. So in the Olympia Municipal Code, we set the rates, and you, as the council, you can change those rates, but you have to have a public hearing to do so. So we'll be in a three-step process. Tonight is the first night in which you would pass a resolution notifying of a potential rate change and a public hearing to discuss that. That public hearing would then be on December 10th, and then after that, if you wanted to make that change, you would take an action as your final, in your final meeting of the year to adopt that final rate, and then you could move forward into 2025 with the zero rate. So I wanted to pull, we want, again, we wanted to pull this out of the end-of-year budget balancing presentation and present this to you with the resolution. So that is what is before you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from council? Councilmember Partially.
I forgot to ask this last night. It's actually a two-part question. With the downtown improvement district, how much of this stakeholder work was completed? And I, we had a break with the pandemic, so I'm trying to remember what the early stakeholder work was. And then the second part is, I assume if we're going to be assessing the property owners, we would have to go back and petition for 61% of the value of downtown. Is that right?
That's a great question. So the, when we went through the DID process, the DID launched with the idea that it would be property owners, not business owners. So a lot of their stakeholder engagement that they did on that was focused on the property owner, not the business owner. We have a precedent now where we, we will, we will really actually probably need to be talking to both as a part of this process, depending upon kind of some of the early feedback of that conversation. I have a feeling that this piece about should it be property or business will emerge. It's emerged as a discussion point in the past. So I don't think you could rely on previous stakeholder engagement efforts for this conversation. I think you are starting fresh. There are certain things that will be in the purview that you could, let's say you have this engagement and you say ultimately, the only thing that's wrong is the rates that you have. So council could, by its own action, keep the PBIA and the ordinance that we have in place, but change the rates through another public hearing process. There are certain decisions that would actually require the, to redo the recertification and repetitioning process. So switching from a business to a property would most likely be triggering that new petitioning model. But I, I don't think that you avoid that conversation. I think you embrace that conversation and ultimately determine from there. I also want to add this as another point that I sort of missed. The PBIA voted unanimously on this, and it's been a conversation that I was, I really want to give them credit. They've been debating and sort of discussing what is the future of the PBIA and sort of watch them coalesce really around this conversation of, it's time. It's been 20 years since this was first passed. The last time that it went to council for this conversation of renewing was in 2010. It's a good time to have this conversation as to what should it look like in the, in the future. So I just really wanted to commend them on the work that they did to bring this unanimous decision before you.
Can I do one follow-up? Two pins that I would love to have put in this place.
Yes.
I really think the consultant when brought on should be working with the downtown alliance because they did, did do a lot of outreach during their most recent petition process. So they may go, oh, we should have done this, or we should have done that. That may inform some of the stakeholder because there was resistance, and what was it? You know, where you're going. And then the second is having to do with the flower baskets. I would also encourage us to look at a partnership like we've done with the downtown guides because they have the truck for watering and see if they'd be willing to partner with us instead of pushing it through the PBIA.
Okay.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
So I'm looking forward to this conversation and when it comes back, probably next year, give or take. So the two, two things that come to mind about if we were looking at hearing back about property is I get concerned about, okay, a developer wants to build downtown, and while they're building it, they're being charged. I know it's not a lot, but it is a narrative consideration. And then the other part of it is vacant buildings, property owners that own a building or two and aren't really around and weren't aware that there was this change coming down. And so those are just two factors I think about in the back of my mind as we're looking at this. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Great points. Any additional questions? Mayor Protem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Minor brief, I just, I'm really excited about this. It's, I'm glad that you're not only here presenting tonight, but giving that sort of special shout-out that I think is so necessary and really lifting the PBIA members up. This was really, really hard to get to, and I wasn't even a part of every meeting, but I, you know, I'm curious, and so I like to sit in every once in a while. But yeah, it wasn't, I mean, I could only imagine what it took to get here where everyone is aligned. And for what it's worth, let's find a way with the flower baskets, okay? You know, they mean a lot to people, they're, anyway.
I got it.
So I'm glad that that circled back, you know? Yes, yes, yeah, not favorable, but you know, it, it means a lot. So it's, anyways, yeah, I also, what a, what great timing, too, with, with the PBIA taking, taking a pause and really spending next year to reset, and it's very much in line with what I think all of our advisory groups or advisory bodies really need to do, maybe not in the same way, but really thinking about, hey, where are we assessing the, the context of where are we now? What was the initial purpose of this? And I'm just so glad that somehow you and your team were able to go back and find some of those like historical answers, you know, to how it came to be. So really, really good work, and yeah, I'm so glad. Thanks.
Any additional questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Partially.
For one more pin?
Yes.
Being, having been part of the early DID before pandemic and then after, and conversations, and I'm, I'm not sure if the Mayor Protem's heard this, but one of the resistance to potentially disbanding PBIA during the DID conversation is there's a, it was a huge interest in the business community to be in advisory committee on policies as much as a fund distribution. So I know that Community and Livability is looking at our advisory committees, and when that, those conversations occurred before the pandemic, we heard from WOBA and a few other business associations wanting to have a fuller discussion on a potential advisory that was small business. Just to put that pin in there, there was a lot of information, interest.
I will, I would be remiss if I didn't also pass along an invitation from the PBIA Advisory Committee as they develop the schedule for what their stakeholder engagement looks like. They did say numerous times that it would be wonderful to see council members on occasion be able to participate, join, and listen to some of the listening sessions as they get scheduled with the downtown stakeholders and ratepayers. So as that calendar for this program gets developed, we'll make sure that you're aware of those opportunities to participate.
All right. I just have a clarifying question, which is, you were just mentioning the focus groups. I'm assuming that's happening as part of the process after we would hypothetically take action. Okay, so what is the plan to communicate about the upcoming hearing to the ratepayers?
Yes, so we do have a, to the best of our ability, we have built an email distribution list. To a good number of our downtown ratepayers, we will send out a notice of the public hearing. I will also be working with the PBIA Advisory Board members to just spread the word the old-fashioned way. Talk to your neighbors and let them know that there is a public hearing being held, that they will have the opportunity to share any insight during that public hearing process. But you are absolutely correct. We would not initiate work on that reevaluation until the, these sort of three perfunctory steps have to occur in advance of any rate change conversation, so.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
I think we do need approval of the resolution.
We need a motion.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's passes. All right. Thank you very much. So that takes us to our next business item, item 6- So that takes us to our next business item, item 6B, which is the acquisition of 12 patrol cars briefing. And here to present this evening is our deputy chief Shelby Parker. And she is joined by Ton Jeffers, our Public Works Deputy Director, and Jaime Mustache, our Fleet Operations Supervisor. Hello, deputy chief.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and city council members. For the record, I'm Shelby Parker, Deputy Chief with Olympia Police Department. Tonight, we're going to discuss patrol vehicles. I will present this topic from the lens of the police department. Public Works Deputy Director Jeffers and Fleet Operations Supervisor Mustache will discuss patrol vehicles and they'll present it from the perspective of the Public Works and they'll discuss the city's long-term electrification plan. I'd like to provide some background information before we move on. In November of 2023, Thurston County voters approved Proposition 1 to provide dedicated revenue for public safety. OPD proposes to use a portion of this revenue to increase the department's fleet of patrol vehicles. Chief Allen, Deputy Costello, and I attended a council study session in April of this year where we discussed the department's strategic plan, the results of the comprehensive analysis of police services, also referred to as the staffing study, and a proposal of how the department intends to use Proposition 1 funds. During this study session, there was discussion about the department's fleet of patrol vehicles and the need to increase the size of the fleet. No formal council action is being requested this evening as the request for spending authority will come before the council on December 10th in the form of a fourth quarter budget amendment. Currently, OPD operates with a fleet of 30 pursuit-rated Ford interceptor vehicles with power-hungry devices such as cameras, computers, printers, and radios. Up to 16 of those 30 pursuit-rated vehicles are used nearly 24 hours a day as they rotate between day and night shift officers. Night shift officers turn their patrol vehicles over to day shift officers at shift change. Patrol vehicles consistently driven 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, are considered hot-seated At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Deputy Director Jeffers and Fleet Operations
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ton Jeffers, Deputy Director of Public Works, and with me is Jaime Mustache, the Fleet Operations Supervisor. We are here this evening to share with you the progress of city fleet electrification effort and also to provide support to Deputy Chief Parker. So Resolution 2320 commits to the establishment of an interim 2030 target that reflects Olympia's fair share of a 50% reduction in global emissions and pledges to reduce emissions 59% below 2019 levels by 2030. While specific to city fleet, we are expected to be at 49% reduction by end of 2024 and on track to meet a 59% reduction by 2030. And you're going to go, well, how are you guys doing that? That does sound pretty great. Well, we are doing it by, right now, 38% of our light duty vehicles are EVs and hybrids. And I would like to take this opportunity to highlight some of our smaller programs that have nearly transitioned their business to 100% EV. And those are parking services, CPND Building Official, and Public Works Vegetation and Habitat Operations. If you ever would like to visit their shop, their one, their F-150 Lightning equipment is, truck is equipped with 100% electric tools and equipment to do their work. It's quite impressive. With 10 years replacement lifecycle, we also anticipate to have all light duties vehicles in our fleet to transition to EV or alternative fuel vehicle by 2034. We're optimistic that technology will be catching up with our operational needs because right now full-size trucks or full-size cargo vans are only available in EV. We cannot find option for mid-size or smaller trucks. We also make great strikes in 2024 by transition to renewable diesel for all heavy-duty vehicles, which have a reduction of 75% in greenhouse gas emissions. We also have a vehicle acquisition policy and procedure adopted in 2023 to establish clear guidelines and procedure for purchasing vehicles with the following criteria. Fuel efficient with lowest emissions, prioritize zero emission vehicles over comparable vehicles powered by internal combustion engines, commercially available, practical, and reasonably cost competitive for what we need. And to help the purchase person need decision and review the need assessment, each department director nominated one or two representative to be part of the fleet review committees. So that's bringing us up to the next steps. DKS Consulting is a Seattle-based firm and they're supporting city fleet to establish and develop a electrification master plan. And they are on track to have a preliminary draft report by the end of 2024. They also helping us with identifying funding opportunities. And recently, we also do outreach such as a ride and drive EV event in October, and we hope you could join next year. And staff like Jaime and his team will continue to monitor EV and alternate fuel vehicle technologies. And with that, Jaime gonna share additional information about the Ford Hybrid Interceptor, which PD is using currently.
Hello, my name is Jaime Mustache. I'm the Fleet Operations Supervisor. So currently, OPD has 13 hybrid interceptors. They were first purchased in 20, early 2021. They have had issues throughout the time that we've had them, ranging from battery for the hybrid batteries. We've had six vehicles already that had to be replaced, their batteries, and multiple warning lights with safety concerns for the officers and for their response times. So we effectively decided to stop ordering hybrid vehicles for that reason. There was no solution for the fixes. There were software. It was hard transitions for the, for the internal combustion transmission and the hybrid transmission when they switched back and forth, causing differential issues. So that was kind of one of the big results of the hybrid interceptor, you know, just proving to not be effective for our use overall. The conventional gasoline engines were up, had less downtime, less maintenance, and were on the road more to help with public safety. Replacement needs. So OPD has shifts currently with their vehicles that are kind of a depot-based. So all the vehicles are co-located in one area. Their plan is to transition to a assigned fleet that would give them a little bit more room for expanding the force. And with that, kind of overall increases the workload and reduces, or increases the dwell time and reduces that time for charging. So overall, it would effectively help with the transition to electric vehicles with some issues in that process that we're working towards with DKS, who's recommending that we, with their draft recommendation, that we pursue EV for patrol in 2028 to start with the transition. But in the meantime, we can potentially use those for admin vehicles opposed to patrol Currently, there is only one pursuit-rated electric vehicle, which is the Chevy Blazer. And it, it's, it is fairly new. So we, we still have to find funding for the vehicle and to add to infrastructure. So the infrastructure is a big piece of it because we do not have any 480-volt capabilities in any of our, in any of our buildings, including city hall. So we need that to do fast charge, DC fast charging to help kind of fill that gap for dwell time for vehicles. And then including the Level 2 chargers as well. So as we see, like I mentioned before, the best fit for EVs in OPD would be for the admin vehicles. Most municipalities that have transitioned some of their police departments into EV vehicles, use them for admin vehicles or use them for detective vehicles. The few that have transitioned their entire fleet are very small cities that have long dwell times in between their shifts. So they, and have the infrastructure in place to support that. So we, we are currently not there, but hopefully in the future, we do get there. For an EV, it's approximately $100,000 to outfit a Chevy Blazer with our outfit requirements. We estimate that 12 EVs are $1.2 million. That will also require secure parking as we increase the fleet and have more officers on hand. So finding space and finding space to put infrastructure in is another factor. So like I mentioned before, the EV Blazer, the Chevy Blazer EV, it does have a 250-mile range. It is all-wheel drive and it is the first pursuit-rated electric vehicle. However, the downsides to that, as I mentioned before, is, or as Deputy Shelby Parker mentioned, is that there is a extreme load on these vehicles due to the equipment that's installed, the radios, the video systems, the lighting. Even though it seems small, it's a huge impact to the range and, and mileage. So there, there, as you guys may already know, there's a huge time for idling for patrol vehicles when they're out on a scene. So that is a consideration when we talk about range, even though it's a 250-mile range, that does not mean that the battery life is going to last that long. So along with that, there are some equipment that we don't have available for the Chevy Blazer that we currently use for fitting some, as, as an example, is storage, storage equipment in the back for all the patrol officers to have what they need. And pit bumpers for the front of the vehicle to do any pit maneuvers as needed. Those are just not options for the Blazer EV at this mo, at the moment. Hopefully in the future, that changes and we can pursue these as technology increases, gets better, range gets better, and they have multiple choices for us to choose from.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to let us share with you what we have been doing. And if you need more information, we'd be happy to provide it to you at a later date.
Thank you, Ton and Jaime. Thank you.
So as you can see, the future is really exciting. Though OPD is excited to transition to electric vehicles, we're just not there yet. So that brings us to where we are. So OPD proposes adding 12 additional patrol vehicles to its fleet. OPD will acquire these vehicles utilizing unspent Proposition 1 funds. OPD has several vacancies, both police officer and non-officer positions. We are actively working on filling these positions. Because of the existing vacancies, OPD has not hired any of the new Proposition 1 funded positions. OPD will not use Proposition 1 funds to hire any FTDs until 2025. Some of the Proposition 1 funds, which were not spent in 2024, will be used to pay for the upfront costs of leasing and equipping 12 additional patrol vehicles. The monthly lease payments and operating expenses for 2025 have already been accounted for in city manager's proposed budget. So before you is a breakdown of what it would cost to purchase 12 patrol vehicles versus what it would cost to lease the same 12 patrol vehicles. The leased option reduces upfront costs by about $600,000. The lease payment is about $100,000 less than the city's replacement fund payment. Maintenance expenses are about the same because maintain, maintenance will continue to be provided by city staff. Over the course of five years, leasing 12 vehicles saves the city approximately $1,111,000. I would like to recap how Proposition 1 funds have been spent in 2024. The Olympia Downtown Alliance received funds to increase lighting downtown and expand the downtown guide program. The municipal court received funds to help fund jail alternatives to include electronic home monitoring and alcohol monitoring for people experiencing financial hardship. The police department is requesting to use $437,000 to lease and equip 12 patrol vehicles. And with that, we'll turn it over to any questions.
Thanks so much, deputy chief.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments for our presenters this evening? Council member Gilman.
First, I'm really tempted to just make a motion for us to buy a whole bunch of Tesla trucks and put full wraps on them. But, nope, nope, nope. Nope, nope, nope. Bad idea. Okay, my, my, my real question is about how much of the equipment that we'll, we'll put on the leased vehicles is, has a life of more than five years and might be transferred to a, a next vehicle if, if we're switching to this lease model? Looks like Jaime might have an answer.
Yes, so for the equipment in any of the vehicles, whether we outfit for our procurement or lease vehicles, the issue comes with, as the model years change, after five years, typically all of that changes. So even a small measurement will make that change. So it would, we mostly, other than radios and the video systems, lighting and other equipment is going to change.
So we just, we have a five-year lifespan essentially on the vehicles.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Council member Parshly.
Sort of a comment and a question. How many other departments are using leased vehicle models?
Funny you should ask. The city of Lake Stevens, Hermiston, Mason County, Grace Harbor County, South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, and Sunnyside.
Fantastic. I'm, I kind of like this model, is my comment, partly because of the master plan coming forward and I, I may be an optimist, but I can't help it, technology is going to improve and it will not lock us into a 10-year and then we lose the value of the cars. If in five years, we're like, woo-hoo, we can start this process. So that's my comment.
Agreed. Council member Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you to this whole team for giving us this level of information. I, I think it's really important that the council and the community just do a better job telling the story about why we're not getting where we need to get as fast as we'd like, because we just don't have the infrastructure or the right tool to do the job yet, right? And so you're making amazing progress in the fleet. Like what a great moment of celebration. It's, it's very cool. I was hard on the city manager and the chief when I heard this briefing at breakfast last week, and this is the level that I was looking for. So I, I'm, I'm really impressed. I, I know that it's difficult, and I'm really like that thought of going to take-home vehicles, which we learned will help us with our retention, and that then provides another opportunity for another location for Level Two charging in, in the system, you know? It was like 900 bucks to install my charger in my garage, right? So if, if you have that extra capacity that comes with the employee, that's, that's a really, I, I think, a great opportunity to help move the system and moving to a lease. In fact, at the Clean Air Agency last week, Commissioner Netherlands from Mason County sits on the board with me, and he was talking about, they've moved the whole fleet in the county to lease, everything they can lease, and they've saved millions of dollars, just like you've portrayed here with the police cars. And it makes sense, especially in a time where technology's changing so fast, like Councilmember Partially said, to go to half the lifespan in the replacement with the leases is really exciting. And let's lean on the leasing company to bring us those pursuit-rated EVs, right? Like, that's, if that's where the, the market is. So, good job, thank you.
Here, here. Any additional comments? Just makes me really proud to live in a city where we care about the safety of our community, but we're also thinking about the health and safety of our planet as well while we're at it. So I appreciate it and all of your work. If we have no additional questions or comments, that concludes this item for the evening. Thank you so much. All right, so we will move on to our final business item this evening, which is Item 6C, which is the approval of the city manager and the Finance Committee recommendations to the preliminary 2025 operating special dedicated funds and capital budget. And presenting this evening is our city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Councilmembers, again, for the record, Jay Burney, city manager. Tonight is final budget balancing night. So tonight is the culmination of a lot of work by this council and me and the department directors to get you a budget for your approval for 2025. I'm not going to go through all of the slides that you've seen since October 22nd through the many public hearings. Instead, I'm going to focus mostly on the items that still needed some discussion and questions that arose from the study session on October 22nd, with a few summary slides mixed in. The new discussion items that I'm going to share with you tonight were shared with the Finance Committee last night, and there's, I have a unanimous recommendation from the Finance Committee for what you're going to see tonight. And I'll weave in tonight some of the conversation I have with Finance Committee where they asked me to, to add some additional comment. I want to start with some organizational changes since our October 22nd study session. One of our discussions that night was around my direct reports, and, and wanted me to, you wanted me to continue to look at that. In talking further with, with Mike Reed, our Economic Development Director, and, and looking at where our peer cities have economic development within their organizations, I'm proposing to also move it into Community Planning and Development, along with Housing Homeless Programs. I think I see a lot of synergy, and those groups do as well, with all these groups working together around our housing work, Olympia Strong, community development, and overall livability in Olympia. So I think this is a really good fit, and it creates a Community Planning and Economic Development Department. And by doing that, I only gain through the reorg, as you know, by eliminating one of the assistant city managers, I've had to do some restructuring or reorg. I gained one direct report, which is the climate program. Dr. Braff and I believe strongly that it's important for the climate programs to be in the city manager's office, in terms of importance of the work, and to ensure that work permeates throughout the organization. So I want to stop there, because that's a, one item we had for discussion, and so my proposal, again, move economic development into CPND and keep the climate program with me. Public Defense, which used to be under Assistant City Manager Rich Hoy, goes under the Assistant City Manager, which eventually will be Stacy Ray, but for now Debbie, along with the engagement work around community oversight for law enforcement and social justice and equity commission. So I'm going to stop there, and I want to talk a little bit about the, I'm going to get into the council's support position next, and there's some, something I want to talk about on this slide, but I want to pause here on this first move.
Any questions or comments? Reactions? Mayor Potem, win.
Yeah, just a quick one. I, I trust you know that, you know yourself better than anyone in what you can and can't handle, or what you choose to handle or not. But thank you for taking our feedback and, and really figuring out not only how to sort of implement it, but also what might work well for, for folks under your leadership as well. So that's what I'm hearing tonight, so thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. So in looking at this org chart, I also want to pivot to the addition of a council support position and why it is important in the 2025 budget. Over the years, Susan, the Assistant to the City Manager, has taken on additional responsibilities, including the youth council and, and your legislative liaison work. And when we talk about legislative liaison work, we're talking about expanding that to be more of a year-round conversation, and we're going to bring you some proposals around that next year. And even with a new resource like Dawn that we brought under Susan, we have additional support needs for council committees and commissions, the Social Justice and Equity Commission as it stood up, and starting next year, community oversight of law enforcement. We are working as efficiently as possible with the support positions we have, and we've moved a lot of pieces around to be really efficient with the use of those resources. And actually, as I've looked at all of the reorg here and looking for ways for us to be more efficient as a city organization. The reality is, and I think what, what I've seen and felt, and I think we've all felt, is the council's priority projects are moving at a really great pace, and the work is getting done. But what we're seeing is some of the little things are getting left behind at times, from time to time, and most of those little things are around the support of the seven of you. One of the most important things that's, to me and everyone on that fourth-floor team, is taking care of the seven of you. You have difficult jobs as it is, most of you have day jobs coupled with your night jobs, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of the needs of council. Council has also been asking for support position, I think, all the way back to the prior city manager. We've had conversations about needing council support positions. And every year, as we've talked about it, we've had difficult budgets, and council has set it aside year over year to take care of other needs in the city organization. So even though this is a tough budget year, there's never going to be a good year to keep at, to add more resources. But I'm recommending that you do add a council support position. I think this, this coupled with the other cuts from this, in the city manager's office, it's going to fill a critical role for the council, to, to make sure we're taking care of you and taking care of council support. So I think I've really come a long way with this discussion, as we've had it since October 22nd, and really take into heart kind of the conversations I've had with a lot of you individually about what your needs are and where you continue to need support. And again, I'm going to recommend a council support position. So what's that look like? I've added it here as an additional enhancement, consistent with your discussions at your informal dinner last week. We have it budgeted at the same level as the Assistant to the City Manager. It's about $160,000 a year. That's, that's $151,000 approximately in salary benefits, some money for training and travel, a computer, those types of things. There's a little bit of one-time money in here as you stand up any position. In terms of roles and responsibilities, I think we're at the beginning of this conversation, but I know you had some conversation about onboarding, helping from onboarding new council members, tech support, email management and prioritization, calendar management, including coordinating invitations to community events and celebrations, meeting coordination logistics, including intergovernmental assignments, travel and training, and then policy referral coordination and tracking, which is something I think we could all benefit a lot from this position. So we may still have some discussions needed about, around reporting and around any other additional duties. We've got some time to, to work with you to figure all that out. I don't think we need to have all of that settled this evening. The most important thing is I got it in the budget for you. So if you're comfortable that it's in the budget, then I can work with all of you over the coming weeks to figure out, kind of finalizing the responsibilities, have a conversation about reporting, and then get to a place where we can recruit this and get it filled. So I'm going to pause there and see if you're comfortable with where we are.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I'll just say thank you very much for, you know, taking all of our feedback, especially since the October 22nd study session. I know of a, a lot of us expressed concern over the workload that Susan would be taking on and Dawn by supporting all of us, and so we're, we're pleased to see that there'll be another person to at least take some of that burden off of their plate. So we appreciate that. So, thanks, Jay.
You're very welcome. All right, just some summary slides. You've seen these before. This is just a summary to kind of bring you home on the general fund side of the budget. We've made around $2.5 million in revenue adjustments across the timeline that we've been working on budget together, as we've kind of reconfirmed the numbers. We've also included about $2.4 million in baseline adjustments that we've made along the way since we rolled out the initial budget. As the numbers became more clear, we're able to kind of dial them in better. A lot of those lead to savings, so we're, we found about $2.4 million along the way. We also have some personnel reductions. Through this budget, we're eliminating 26.75 positions across all funds at a total of $3.6 million. In 2026, we'll have an Assistant City Manager position that will be permanently reduced, along with some other positions that become vacant mid-year, meaning that we already have close to half a million dollars in reductions planned for 2026, so thinking forward into the 2026 budget. I do want to comment here that although we have all these positions eliminated, we're down to, I think, five or six true at-risk positions in the City of Olympia. And there's amazing work that's been done here by the department directors. I set a tone of what we needed, and I sat back and watched our department directors work together to say, you know what, I've got a vacancy here, I think we can push, put this person over here. And they reached across departments to help each other find positions for as many people as we could. Those that are at risk are at risk until February, so not the end of the year, so we're going to, we're going to keep them on till the end of February. And between now and then, we're going to do everything we can as other vacancies come about to try to find places for those five individuals as well between now and the end of February. So I know, Mayor, you had some questions and agenda setting about that, just kind of how we're approaching our vacancies, and so I, I'll ask Manny Boss, our HR director, to come up and just talk a bit more about how we're caring for and taking care of those who are at risk.
Good evening, City Council. So Manny Boss, our Director of HR, he/him/his pronouns, so little, little context. So none, none of these reductions have been easy on not only the impacted employees, but our managers and, and directors, so I start by saying that. I think the first thing that was important to us is that we do this with care and compassion. So that February 28th date is an example of that, so that is indicative of the thought that went into this. We're not laying folks off during the holiday season. February 28th, I know it'll go quick, but that does give us additional time to look for creative solutions in terms of finding reassignment options for folks. And so we're thankful that we were able to come together as a team to establish that date as the effective date of a potential reduction of force. So start by saying that. So with some of the reductions, there were actually at-risk reassignments offered concurrently. So folks were identified as at-risk, but concurrent with that notice, we found places for those folks. So just as an example, in Public Works, Mark and Tom were able to actually hit their reduction goals, but also save for employees. And so that's creative strategic thinking. There are examples of that across the city, and so I appreciate the work of my colleagues in that endeavor. So there were a couple of employees who were identified as at-risk and provided reassignment options. Those two employees did decline those options, and so we'll work on a thoughtful transition for those folks. And so, yes, as Jay indicated, there are five current folks on the at-risk list. So in terms of support being offered to those folks, we meet with folks regularly, we keep them up to date, we have engaged the services of a resume and cover letter service, so folks have an opportunity to not only update their career information as it relates to options potentially right here at the city, as well as maybe externally if we aren't able to find options. So I, I think most importantly, we're a really creative, innovative team, and so I think we'll continue to look for those creative solutions. I'm really confident that we'll do our very best to, to find a place for everybody. And so, you know, one, one final thought, sort of echoing my initial comments, it's been really difficult for these employees. So this has not just been an exercise in budgets and dollars and cents. There's people here involved, and it's not been easy for the town team that I work with, our directors and our managers. But at the center of every conversation, we're people, and we kept people at the center of our hearts in everything that we did to date. So at this point, I'll be happy to answer any sort of questions you have.
Any questions or comments from Manny? Mayor Potem, win.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for sharing, and I know it's just really a brief, efficient summary for what is a lot of hard and good work and a lot of tough conversations and awkward and unfortunate. And of course, you know very much, if anyone, as the HR manager or the HR director, that you can't put everyone's business out there, right? So I know that, just through talking with the city manager, that there has been so much intentionality in this process, thinking about where folks are as far as their proximity to retirement, you know, what their, not only their job titles, but like, what are, what are their collective skills, you know, and how could it be continued to be utilized at the City of Olympia? So I just, I really appreciate not only all of that work, but you being here tonight and, and really speaking to that. And, and you're absolutely right. It's not just about dollars and cents, but it's also about people. And it might seem, you know, like a strange time to say, well done, because it is such a tough topic. But if we think about how many people we have at the city organization, and that somehow it's been whittled down to five at-risk for no reason of performance issues, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say that is a lot of really, really good work, even though it's tough. So thank you.
Thank you. As well said. Any additional comments? All right, well, just thank you so much, Manny and your colleagues for your work, and I think the Mayor Potem said it well, so.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks. Have a good night.
So our final balancing position is a gap of about $4.1 million, which is where I indicated at the October study session it would likely land if we added a council support position. Turns out I was a prognosticator. We're right about $4.1 million. If we utilize $4.1 million in fund balance to balance for 2025, that will leave you with a total fund balance of $14.5 million, which is roughly 13%. As councils are aware, your policy goal is to have a fund balance between 10 and 25%. I think we've been conservative here in our estimates in terms of where we think we might end up at year-end this year. So I, I think this could grow a little bit, probably not a lot, but it will grow a little bit over the coming year. So it does leave us still some cushion as we move forward into the coming years, as well beyond just your standard 10% reserve. So where we go from here is to get into kind of the, the final parks budget balancing, then get into the dedicated funds to finish up your night, but I'm going to pause here first and make sure you're comfortable with where we are, with our gap, use of fund balance. Again, unanimous approval by the Finance Committee for where you are tonight with the general fund. And I don't know if, if the Chair of the Finance Committee wants to speak to the general fund piece or wants to wait till we get through everything. Wait till we get to the end of everything, okay? I'm seeing head nods.
All right. Looks like you can keep going.
Okay, I'm going to ask Paul Simmons to come up. At the October 22nd study session, Paul mentioned that the parks budget was still a bit in flux, awaiting final revenue estimates. Based on the final estimates, he's added some updated reductions for your, for your review, and I'm letting him walk you through them.
Thank you, Jay. For the record, Paul Simmons, Parks Arts and Recreation Director. As just a reminder, the parks budget is on a little bit of a, a, a set income in that... As just a reminder, the parks budget is on a little bit of a set income in that we have the 11% of the general fund, the, oh, sorry, the MPD resources and then the VUT resources. And just like the city budget, the expenses are growing at a faster pace than the revenues. And so at the end of this budget cycle, when we talked to you on October 22nd, we had about $260,000 of a deficit that we had these proposed reductions to solve that on the left. Since that time, we found an error, actually in our 2024 benefits. And as we resolved that issue, we also realized that that same error was also in 2025. And so we had to fix that. And then there were also some corrections that were found with the calculation of the 11% general fund revenue. So that resulted in an additional $167,000. So the numbers that you see on the right are basically adding in $167,000 of additional expense reductions and some revenue enhancements as well. And that gets us, I'm not going to go through the list. It's mostly the same categories that we talked about on the 22nd, just a little bit bigger numbers in some of those categories as we go through. But happy to answer any questions and just mostly wanted to share that we had a change from where we last left off on the 22nd. The city manager's request. I'll also acknowledge some of the discussion that happened at Finance Committee last night where we talked about our cultural event series, as you noticed. And we talked about on October 22nd, the position that we are eliminating as a vacant position that supported those events, and we're reevaluating that model. And we'll be bringing back to the CLIPS Committee a new proposal of how to move forward with that work. Also brought up last night at the Finance Committee was the idea of looking to transition towards Inspire Olympia funds as well to help support some of that work. So we'll continue to look at those, and we plan to bring back a proposal to CLIPS early next year. And then we'll also be working with event partners as we work through kind of a transitional year in 2025, hopefully to launch maybe a new way of doing this as we look to 2026. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Any questions or comments for Paul? Have we started engaging folks that are, you know, that need to be aware of the change related to cultural events? Have we started that process?
We've talked to some of the event partners. We have not talked to all of them. And so we're still working through that, just as we connect with folks. Some folks have been out of town.
Sure.
But we have started in some of those discussions.
Okay. I just wanted to know, to make sure I'm like not jumping the gun here when I start talking about, okay. Thank you.
All right, we're going to jump to lodging tax. So one of the final things we've been waiting on is a lodging tax advisory committee set of recommendations. So Mike Reed is going to join us here to walk you through the recommendation that came out of Finance Committee.
Hello, Council. Still for the record, Mike Reed, Economic Development Director. So we did, since I last was in front of you in October, there was a lodging tax advisory committee where they evaluated all of the proposals, as Councilmember Cooper shared earlier this evening. This was the largest award amount that we have seen. It is also the largest applicant pool and request pool that the lodging tax has seen. So we've seen considerable year-over-year growth to this program. And the program is becoming more sophisticated in the way that it does its reviews. And they even want to have further conversations about implementing some new practices in their future years to get at some of these, I don't know, to sort of ease of review and predictability for applicant process. So 30 applications, really what came out of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, there are two options that will be before you this evening, and we took those to the Finance Committee last night. And the Finance Committee did make a recommendation on that. But there is essentially an option A with funding to Lake Fair that would have the total lodging amount, award amount being $1,135,700. Or there is an option B, which is do not fund Lake Fair with an amount of $1,127,645. In option B, there is some degree of reallocation to other potential awardees. So very small font here. Again, we have 30 potential awards that we need to show here on the screen. I do not intend to go through all potential 30 awards, but you can see here, it is a large pool and a large consideration. As Councilmember Cooper will know, your Lodging Advisory Committee did have to go through all 30 of these applications and make a decision and evaluate all of these. So what you see before you, this is option A that does include Lake Fair as a potential award. There was some discussion on your advisory committee. I'll defer to Councilmember Cooper as your representative on there to provide some additional context on that. So you can see the amount, which does leave us with a total in reserve of $205,000. This will be the lowest reserve amount that we've actually had, but I do think the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and Council has discussed over years, we need to potentially sort of draw that down. So we would be putting out this, this is the award number for this year, but there are some multi-year contracts that we do have in here. Some of those are for VCB, which we have on a multi-year contract, and your administrative staff. And then this is option B. So where we ultimately came from with a recommendation from the Finance Committee last night was to go with option A, with a caveat there, though, that before entering into a contract with Lake Fair, that the city manager and mayor do meet with the Lake Fair organizing administration to have some conversation about some of the unresolved issues that are still hanging out there that I think that the Council wants some clarity to, and have those conversations and feel comfortable about any advancements, or maybe reach the conclusion that maybe enough hasn't been done yet. But you still can choose not to ultimately enter into that contract if that does not fulfill the needs there. So that is what option A does. So with that, I will stop talking. And I would defer immediately to Councilmember Cooper if there's some additional context that you'd like to provide.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
If we decide that they're not meeting our needs and are not making the changes that we ask, like for, do we have to come back here and do a vote on this? Or could it just be amended? Or would it just go default to be?
It would just be, it would just go to reserves. So it would just be an unfulfilled contract. So an unentered contract.
Okay. So that money would just sit in reserves for next year?
Yep. It would just go straight to reserves for the following year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, when?
This is not about Lake Fair. I'm curious, because I know Councilmember Cooper earlier mentioned after a public comment that there was influx of applications. Was it, I think you had mentioned it was the highest or one of the highest amounts of applications. And so I'm curious, a lot of what we're seeing on here are, you know, it's a small city. These are things that we're familiar with. And so I'm wondering, how did the LTAC board consider new applicants? Sort of like instead of taking the money pot and trying to make it equal for everyone, right, or give everyone a little bit? How did you all consider making sure that folks that usually get funding continue to get funding to be successful? Like what was that sort of line? Because I think of, I mean, I'll just take like the first one up there, the Turkey Trot, right? Or only Turkey Day for a Miler. So the trot around the lake, I think that's what it is. And so 4,000 is comparatively not that much, but if the funding recommendation is to give them 1,200, that's actually quite a lot less. But that's just one example. So and then there's a few on there where the funding recommendation is coming in, you know, a sizable amount less than they're asking for. So can you talk a little bit about that? Like what was the sort of, how did you all approach it? You know, is it a science? Is it an art? Can you kind of talk about how you went about it?
Thank you. It's a science and an art. And what we found really, and Mike implied this, is with 30 applications that are in sort of like runs and walks, theaters, music festivals, you know, artistic events, they don't all fit together in the same group. So it's, one of the things we'd like to do and improve that is to make some categories with some suggested funding amounts for each type of applicant, if you will, in future rounds. So this year, and Amelia can send the Council the full spreadsheet, because I'm not going to be exactly right, because I don't have it in front of me. But we looked at, in front of us, we had prior year, prior year amount. And then we were also looking at the number of people that are brought from more than 50 miles away, because tourism is the ultimate outcome of the funds. And once we did that, clearly, there's still, it's really hard to get to any level of congruency. And so we went through and we used $50 a tourist as an average that we were trying to get close to. So we didn't let people be very much above that $50 mark. So most of the, especially in what would be, I think there was three kind of tiers in the chart, that the ones that were funded at lower percentages did better in the $50 or above because they were at a lower percentage of their ask, if that makes sense. It will make a lot more sense if you see the spreadsheet from Amelia. I don't know if you can.
Yeah, I'll add to that, too. So we do have some tools that we can determine. So as you've heard me talk in the past, we have this sort of geofencing tool that can take a look at where people came from, how far away they came. So if we see, let's use your Turkey Trot event, okay? We can actually see, take a look at where the race started, how many of the people that were participating in that came from further than 50 miles away. And then, as Councilmember Cooper is saying, so let's say they asked for $4,000, and there's 100 people that came from 50 miles away. It will give you a cost per tourist. So how much are we investing in lodging tax per person 50 miles away or more? So I actually commend the advisory committee, and there is a data set that they're trying to look at that is kind of equal. What are you willing to invest from a lodging tax standpoint per request, per tourist that it's generating? So that's, I think, kind of where you're trying to get. It looked like you were getting sort of in this range where if everybody's getting about $50 per tourist, so the ones that are getting a lot of money, for example, you could see like the farmer's market, big tourism draw. So $50 per tourist with a lot of tourists coming equals a larger award. So less tourists, smaller award.
And I can add just a little bit more. So we also have, just for the public and the Council, we have a grant evaluation software that the city owns, the same one we use for the Inspire Olympia. And so the whole committee is able to go and, based on the priorities of the fund that's been come up with in previous years, and evaluate the applications in each of those spaces. So we all went through and evaluated the application based on outcomes, and then they were ranked that way. And then we did the dollars based on, starting from a recommendation from Amelia, which was really helpful to make the process go more quickly. And also, Councilmember partially put a bug in my ear that one of the things that we noticed in this work, especially because we've been talking about so much about diversity, equity, and inclusion in our work, and how do we integrate it into the work so it's just obvious, right? And we ask questions about what are you doing? How are you approaching diversity, equity, and inclusion? And what we want to know is, we want to see it. We want to see how people are doing the good work in their project and not just here, we took a training or we wrote a statement. And so there's some places where we almost want to bring the applications more to life so we could just get way better at this. So categorize it, have some funding recommendations so that, you know, I think the Funk Fest is a great example. Like we would love to be way more sophisticated about what percentage you would go up or down if you were a previous fundee. You know, my preference would be, you know, there should be a track for previous fundees that's easier, that is established, you know, tourism event or whatever that might be. And then we do, in our system, also give points for new and innovative projects. So points for like what you were talking about around new applicants did pull them up if they were scored that way by the committee.
Sure. Mayor Protem, when?
I just have a couple of, while we're kind of still on this, thank you for the information from you both. I'm wondering, was there any, is there any applicants that applied and are not getting any funding that, you know, maybe aren't on here? Oh.
You can see that there's a couple that have blank spots. So you can see there is Beast of Big Creek Trail Run, and then the Love Ole Shop and Dine Explore Guide. So that's the guide, the actual paper document that the ODA has produced for downtown. Those are the two that did not get funding.
Thank you. And then also, just wanted to follow up, and maybe it was in there and I had missed it, but curious about, thank you to the Turkey Trot tonight. So if, so say we give them 1,200, and then that's actually going to put them in the red and they can't do it with 1,200. So how did the group, you know, how do you know if they're going to need it or not, right? And we couldn't just give that 1,200 to someone else?
We asked that question in the application. So they told us where their breakpoints were if we were reducing it and how it would impact them. So we took that into consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Great questions. Any additional questions or comments? Not to reopen old wounds, but I felt it was important to maybe provide some additional context as to why we're talking about a funding recommendation, option A and B, when it comes to Lake Fair. And this is just, you know, as a result of what happened, I believe, two years ago now in 2022 with the Lake Fair Court situation. And so since then, we've had a few meetings with Lake Fair on what they're doing to improve their efforts as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion, similar to what Councilmember Cooper was just talking about. And so funding recommendation A has that contingency that we are to engage with them on how they intend to improve their efforts to be more deliberate about their, you know, pursuit of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And ironically enough, Capital Lake Fair is one of the most diverse events that we have in the community. And so it's important that we know, you know, that they're being intentional on their efforts to support the organization and the people who come to our community to enjoy the festivities that they provide on an annual basis. And so I am very much, you know, looking forward to having those meetings with them, and hopefully we can get somewhere sort of beyond this phase where we haven't funded Capital Lake Fair for the last two years. And we really would like to, you know, bridge that gap and move on if we can. So looking forward to those meetings. Mayor Protem, when?
Turns out I have a lot of thoughts about LTAC. I have a couple of questions and some thoughts about the Lake Fair, or sorry, options A and B, but just want to make sure that everyone's had an opportunity. Okay. All right. It sounded like we were getting close to closing. I was like, no, wait. Mike, could you talk about, other than, you know, what was just discussed, can you talk about the differences between option A and B? Because if we get into B, that money's going somewhere, right?
That's correct. So you can see, so here's option A, and Lake Fair's ask, I think it was 25,000, let me find it on the side, 25,000. So what you don't have, it's not option A, and then option B is just $25,000 less. You're taking a portion of that 25,000 and reallocating it to the ones that are in pink, with some of it going back into reserve. So it wasn't a full allocation of all 25,000. It was to get some that had gotten a little bit less than what they had asked, brought them up a little bit. I think, yeah, that's, yeah, so you can see the... I think, yeah, that's, uh, yeah, so you can see the, I don't know if click here, so there, there's their twenty-five thousand that zeros out and you start seeing some of these actually go up from what they were on the previous slide. So a couple of things got allocated upwards and they distributed or redistributed that twenty-five thousand. And your reserve amount changes from two thousand and, uh, two hundred and five thousand to two hundred and thirteen thousand.
I was listening. Thank you. Um, I, uh, could you, I have another question. Do you have, could you share with me and maybe you or council member Cooper, but, uh, could you share with me how this contingency came to be? Is it something that the LTAC group thought to be a good contingency? Is it something that the Lake Fair Board came and asked about?
My understanding, I'll defer to councilman Cooper, but it's, it did sound like originally the, the, the board or the advisory committee was going to just fund Lake Fair. Uh, and then I think the conversation moved into, hey, there is still some unresolved stuff that this council will want to explore, but I'll.
Yeah, so, um, the committee, I will, I, I expressed to the committee that I didn't believe the council and city manager were fully, felt there was full resolution to the conversations that we've been having and I did not know, did not, did not think that the council would support a recommendation that came with Lake Fair included in the package. Um, that was just through a conversation with the city manager and the mayor prior to the meeting. Um, and so when the committee said, heard that, they, they, they thought, well, that makes sense that we could offer another option, but if we don't actually offer this option, we, we're not asking the council to do what we want. So I was the only person that didn't want to do it, do the funding on the committee. So it would have been, you know, a four to one vote to do this package. So I suggested that we put the condition on that one applicant, that the, that there be a successful, a set of conversation or set of conversations with the mayor and the city manager prior to any funding so that, and then, and then added a backup option just so that council could be moving, keep moving forward tonight. Um, because if we didn't have an option B and you didn't want to do what they recommended, then we would have to go back to the committee for a new recommendation.
Mayor Protem win.
Uh, thank you. Uh, that's really helpful for me. Um, uh, and it also sounds like a lot of hard work on your in the groups part, uh, council member Cooper, because you probably want to have an Oprah moment. I think I would, just you get some, you get everything you want, yeah. Um, I, uh, possibly unpopular opinion here, uh, possibly. Um, I am, with this, all this information, I'm inclined to support option B. Um, I, uh, I am happy that these two options are, are coming and, and I don't, I don't know if happy is the right word, but I appreciate that these two options are coming. Um, I, uh, very much have enjoyed, uh, going to Lake Fair growing up and, and I would like for it to still be around. I really appreciate that it brings in a really diverse crowd. And I also, uh, it's tough for me to think about, um, the time that has passed for these conversations, um, to be, to, you know, come to an end for these, for, uh, any residual issues to, to be resolved. And I don't think that it is resolved, uh, with, uh, with the kind of intention I would like to see when it's not time for money to be dispersed. I think that it happens, um, and, you know, we're a small community of people. I think that it happens all along the way. And, um, I, uh, I want to be careful not to be sharing my own story, or stories that are not mine to share. But I, I take issue with, uh, with, uh, the way that the Lake Fair Board has, has treated our former mayor, um, our, our city manager, whenever they have came to the table, uh, a few times now, um, trying to resolve this issue. And, uh, so I would love to be able to, to fund Lake Fair and then to be, to join in their parades and, you know, Lake Fair out, um, uh, in future. And I think that, uh, I think that for now, for me, option B makes sense and, and, uh, let's please still come to the table.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any additional comments? Council member partially followed by council member Gilman.
I, I eventually supported option A because my feelings initially, Mayor Protem, were very similar to yours, that I feel like we haven't had resolution and it's been an awful long time and there's been some, um, lip service, if you will, on certain actions to do with money and lack of, uh, respectful treatment of the former mayor and the city manager. Um, the reason I came to option A was I wanted to be able to give a leverage point to the current mayor and the city manager in our conversation with full freedom to understand the council wants forward action that is real and not a course that is going to be instituted in action. And if this option A gives them that leverage, I'm going to support that. But I am a hundred percent behind what you're saying.
Council member Gilman.
I'm in support of option A of, um, including the funding for Lake Fair. And I, I want to be clear, we, several people have mentioned that, um, the crowd who attends Lake Fair is one of the most diverse gatherings that we have, um, through all different ways of measuring diversity. So I, I want to be clear that the, the disagreement we had, uh, a few years ago was specifically about the pageant and wasn't broadly about access to Lake Fair or treatment of folks at Lake Fair. And so my hope is that this, this conversation that we're hoping to have between the, the mayor and city manager and Lake Fair folks is to talk specifically about the pageant issue. Um, and so I just, I just don't want to, I just don't want to broaden it to, to a, a broader criticism of the event because I, I don't think that's warranted.
Council member partially.
A hundred percent agree with, uh, what council member Gilman is saying, but the reason why we are sticking on this, not only is it past, uh, lack of respect and, and respect of the DEI work our city has pledged to, but also the court is a reflection of the Lake Fair. While the people and the participants don't seem to be a hundred percent reflected in this court and how they treat the court, and, um, we know the selection process. I just, I think we need to be cognizant of, it's all well and good to have a participation that's diverse, but if it, the whole system is not aimed at that diversity and following our policy and how they interact with our mayors, uh, and our city manager, I, I feel fairly strongly that those are incongruent and we need to make them congruent.
Thank you. Council member Vanderpoel.
So, um, let's say A passes and moves forward. I am, and that fund, the, and then it, uh, Lake Fair doesn't meet our standards and that fund gets set in the reserve. I would, uh, if, if possible, I would hope that the board would allow a new request to be open for the remainder of funds for the other participants because that, I don't want the money to not go towards something in the community. I'm wondering how quickly that turnaround would be if we end up going with A and then Lake Fair doesn't meet the standard and that funding isn't assigned. I wonder if council member Cooper could answer that maybe or?
I could give you some thoughts if you, if you, yes, I'll, 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 um, uh, to actually relaunch an application process and applic, and review process, it's not a light matter. So, uh, and it is not uncommon that, and so all of these funds are reimbursable base contracts. So it is not uncommon that while yes, you award, um, nine hundred and fourteen thousand for funding, it's not uncommon that all of that money actually gets spent and gets carried over to reserves. And we do not, uh, at the end of the year, try to true that up with a new process. So I, I would think that if you, if we opted not to fund, for whatever reason, Lake Fair after some of these initial conversations occurred, so let's say you do option A, those conversations are had and then there's a decision of, hey, we're just not ready to enter into a contract at this point in time. I think carrying the money in reserves to the next year is probably the easiest way. I think it would be incredibly cumbersome to open up an application process just for awarding twenty-five thousand dollars of lodging tax. So I, I, while I applaud the, the, the concept of, hey, let's get the money out there so it can do some good, it just, that threshold of, of doing it for twenty-five thousand just, that's a heavy load for the advisory committee to, I think, move through. Is that, am I understanding that? Okay.
Sure, but Mayor Protem, um, has a question first. Mayor Protem followed by council member Cooper.
It's along the same lines. Um, could the, so if option A were to pass tonight and then the standards were not met or the contingency wasn't fulfilled, and then could we, uh, execute option B?
So what, here's, the only risk you have in that is not knowing how long it might take the mayor and I to work a conversation with Lake Fair. Lake Fair doesn't happen until the summer, right? So technically they have some time. And in fact, they may have a conversation with us, we may ask for some follow-up, they may have to do the follow-up. Some of these other events may start to happen before you get an answer here. And then that starts to then throw this into a different conversation about now do you, how do you revisit this? And so I, like Mike said, I really appreciate the thought that's going into this to try to make sure you maximize the funds. But I think your easiest path for the LTAC committee and, and for this action is to fund option A and then if, if, if we can't get to a place at Lake Fair, let that money go back into reserves. The, the funding that you see here, as Mike indicated, uh, and I think council member Cooper indicated earlier, it's enough for these events to happen. I mean, a little bit more money would, would be great for any of them, but it meets their needs for them to do their events this year. And so I think it just does get pretty complicated depending on how long it takes this conversation with Lake Fair to happen. So just add that for context.
Thank you for that. We could also give it, another one is, and I'm not being cheeky, I guess maybe a little bit, but another one is that we could give Lake Fair a whole other, a whole year, a whole another year, and then just give, um, the X, the twenty-five thousand and disperse them among the, um, the organizations that, that are doing really good work, uh, um, that match our values.
Council member Cooper followed by council member Gilman.
Yeah, and I, and I totally understand the sentiment, the sentiment to do that. And I, I would just ask, so to me, this is really similar to our community development block grant and we rely on a little bit of underspending to build up the, the reserves so that we can make bigger years almost every year than we normally get in our awards. So notice that we're only generating six hundred and seventy-five thousand and awarding one point one. And so to be able to award more in larger years, we rely on a little bit of residual going into the reserve to build it back up. So that's just my opinion and I would, I would, I would hope that we kind of stick with one option, but obviously I'm only one person.
Thank you, council member Cooper. Council member Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I, I just want to urge caution about painting the rest of the organizations as all being in line with our values, that we, we haven't, um,
Vetted.
We haven't vetted, tested, there, there wasn't an analysis like that. So we had a particular issue with one applicant a few years ago, but, but I don't think it's, I, I think we want to be cautious about also painting everybody else as, as being golden in the DEI world, so, um, just, just to, just to be cautious because it's, 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 um, I just, I don't want us to disparage the entire festival, um, in a, in a, in a really subjective way. That, um, I, I think the matter of whether board members were respectful to the mayor and city manager can be a matter of concern, but it's not a matter of diversity and equity, um, to my mind. Um, and, and I, so I, I just, I don't, I don't want this to be about personalities or about something that we don't actually know how it's evolved over three years. And I, and I certainly don't want to paint that the rest, the other forty groups are all rocking and rolling in, in this world, so.
Mayor Protem win. And I, um, I do just want to mention that we should move along soon because, um, twenty-five thousand dollars is a drop in a bucket for this budget item. But, um, yes, we should move along soon. Mayor Protem win.
Yeah, not for the turkey trot. Uh, point taken though, point well taken. Um, uh, council member Gilman, thank you. Um, you're right, we all have work to do. It's not necessarily everything's rocking and rolling. I think you can understand, I'm feeling, uh, passionate about this one. Um, and it, for what it's worth, it's, it's not a matter of personalities and I, I think there's good people serving on the Lake Fair Board. It's a matter of, this hasn't been resolved and it's been, meetings have happened and it hasn't been resolved. It's not that we just haven't liked the tone of what's been happening, it's, we haven't seen any action and we've given it time. Um, but you're right, we should be cautious. Thank you.
So, um, I'll just offer my thoughts. So, uh, I will say that, you know, leading up until, um, this was presented to us as an option, um, I felt very similarly to the mayor Protem. And, and actually I would just say that I still do, um, with the fact that it's contingent upon, um, you know, really coming to the table and seeing what, what they have to offer. Council member Gilman, you make some really great points as well, uh, tonight. I, um, I want to see us move forward and, and get beyond this. I think there's something to be said for, um, giving a little grace. Lake Fair is going to happen anyway. Um, and so if we can be part of, of helping them, um, you know, get to a point of improving their efforts around diversity, equity and inclusion, then we should at least, um, leave the door open for that to, to potentially happen. So, um, I am going to support, um, the funding recommendation option A tonight, um, to give that, that opportunity for us to turn the page, um, and move forward together as a community. So, um, not quite sure how that works, um, in terms of the overall motion, um, but, um, I think we have a majority, um, in supporting the finance committee's recommendation this evening.
I'm, I'm seeing consensus around that and this will, it's all wrapped into your motion at the end, uh, around all the dedicated funds, so. Keep it moving? Okay, you're down the home stretch. Um, I'm gonna move past PBIA, uh, because you already had that discussion earlier tonight and made a decision there. Uh, you, there it is, utility rates, utility rates have not changed since you last saw them. Um, you've had a presentation on this in the past, but as a quick summary, uh, waste resources at a seven point six percent increase, drinking water at a three point nine percent increase, wastewater five point three percent, uh, lot has a pass-through rate increase of three percent and storm or surface water at five point two percent with a total increase every other month of four point seven two percent or four dollars and fifty-two cents on a typical residential bill. And then, and I appreciate Joyce waiting, hanging out with us and wait until the end. Um, and we have some final CFP changes, which Joyce will review now.
Thank you for the record. I'm Joyce Phillips, Principal Planner in Community Planning and Development. And as is the norm every year between when the preliminary capital facilities plan is published around the end of July, first of August, to when we get down to the final number crunching, we have a couple of amendments proposed. I mean, these really reflect updated information around capital projects and a couple of minor corrections. So, um, in Fund Three Twenty, which is for transportation projects, adjustments were made to decrease funding for twenty twenty-five, for the year twenty twenty-five, for the Elliott Sidewalk Project, but the reduction really reflects using nine hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four money that was not spent. Additionally, um, while the Fifth Avenue Bridge Project is still in the CFP, the dollar amount was reduced for year twenty twenty-six to reflect that the Department of Enterprise Services withdrew a grant application. For Fund Three Thirty-Five, the funding source for accessibility improvement projects that aren't related to parks or transportation projects was changed for all six years and the total, the total dollar amount dollar amount and the projects remain the same, it's just changing the funding source for those projects. For year 2025, we've added $511,000 for a solar panels project at the fire station to reflect a grant that the city was awarded for that project. And then we've actually transferred $858,518 for facilities maintenance from the capital fund, because those were projects that were not actually capital in nature, and instead, those are reflected in the operating budget. So that was a correction we made to the, to the CFP. And then when it comes to parks projects, for Fund 340, there is an increase of $900,000 from a transfer of impact fees for 2025, and that will be used to cover professional services associated with park design work. Funds for year 2026 were reduced by $2 million, because the permit fees for the gopher mitigation was paid for this year. And then finally, for 2027 and 2028, $500,000 a year has been added for the purpose of the Phase 2 cleanup work at West Bay Park. So those are the changes between the preliminary and the final CFP, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions or connect you to staff from those departments.
Thank you, Joyce. Are you saying the $2 million reduction is because of gopher mitigation?
It's gopher mitigation and park permitting fees.
Oh, okay, I see.
I, I'm not sure of the exact breakdown for how much was for the, the gopher mitigation.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
We made it. So before we get to your council motion, I do want to wrap up one more thing. There's a question that came to Finance Committee last night by a community member, asking a question around, when you look at the budget document, it shows the general fund property tax up by 18.7% over last year, and it also shows sales tax up by 12%. And they're asking where the difference is there year over year. The sales tax one's an easy one, I'll, I'll get to that one. Prop 1. So Prop 1 passed, Prop 1 adds sales tax, so that's why we're showing an increase in sales tax. We're not anticipating a bunch of new sales tax other than Prop 1, and other what we've budgeted in the budget normally. The other one was around property tax, and that one is just the way we're calculating, it's, it's an accounting function of how we're showing it, and I'm gonna let Joan explain that to you.
Hi, good evening. Joan Lutz, Budget and Finance Manager. So historically, over the last five years or so, we have received over $20 million each year in property tax. We have always, when we receive those dollars, taken certain monies that were dedicated for the City Hall bonds, left one, fire pension, and taken those off the top. And so, in the general fund, you'll only see the amount that can be used for, you know, good governmental purpose. We have re- reallocated the city bonds debt payment, so that it's actually coming from, part of it's coming from other funds who utilize the City Hall, and so we are able to actually reflect more in the general fund to be used for good governmental use. So it's same money, just an accounting change. Any questions?
Councilmember Gilman.
So, Joan, just to make sure it's, it's really clear, we don't expect an 18% increase in the collections that we're gonna receive from the county.
Correct law wouldn't allow that. We're not allowed to do that.
Right, right, and we actually, we've, we've got a pretty clear
Yeah.
limit on, on that cap.
Exactly.
So, this is, this is a way of, of accounting that, that you had distributed these to other funds, so they didn't show up in the general fund before. But in this year's version, all of it is counted in the general fund, and that's the 18% difference?
Not all of it. We're still paying the fireman's pension and the left one pension, those are still coming off the top as dedicated funds, because those are, can't be used towards the parks calculation for the 11%, but doing it this way, by making the City Hall bond actually come from other funds and the general fund, we actually increased parks allocation of 11% because we recognize it as a general use, so.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Any additional questions or comments for Joan? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Joan.
All right, as I wrap up here, and probably turn to the Finance Chair for comments and any final council comments. So, I said at the beginning, and we talked about it along the way, that, you know, this is my sixth budget as a city manager. My first one, actually, I did the 2019 budget for Steve Hall right before he retired, and that was my first budget. And this is my sixth budget. This has been the most challenging budget that I've had in my tenure as, as city manager. And it, it's been a tough ride for the directors, for me, and for the council. I think you've even talked amongst yourself about how difficult this is, this has been as a budget process for all of you two. So, I want to thank the seven of you for your faith in me, and the department directors for us to make the decisions that we needed to make, for your support of all of us through the budget process. I want to thank the department directors for all their hard work, and our employees. We do these inside OLE briefings for employees where I keep them apprised of the budget. I'm very transparent in the decisions I'm making around the budget. It's something I've, I've done since I've taken over as city manager. And they show up 200, 300 at a time to hear my budget updates, because they're tuned in to what we're doing as a city, and they're tuned in to the things that we're doing. So, I just want to express my appreciation for all 600-plus of our employees and the work that they do to, to serve this community, and, and serve the values of this community, and keep things moving. And then lastly, and most importantly for me, is right in the middle of our budget process, our Finance Director moved on to another opportunity. And one of the things that I told you as a council is, we got it. I have the team I need to finish the budget. We're gonna be okay. And yes, we had some stops and starts, and I'm sure I made Joan and her team pull their hair out a couple times with some of my last-minute changes and questions, but to Joan, and Sean, and Owen, and Casey, and everyone in the Finance Department that helped us get here, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you guys for your work. And I know that with Aaron's leaving, Joan, I know you in particular were working over your vacations and time off and putting a lot of extra hours, even though I told you not to. So, thank you for that work. And to Debbie and Stacy, who are always by my side, you know, every presentation that I've given you, Debbie has put together for me, and helped me just keep the pieces together. And then Stacy, with our budget sustainability work as well. So, it takes a team to get here with all of us to get to this point in time, and I'm excited to be finally delivering your 2025 budget to you. And with that, I'll stop talking and turn it over you for final comments and questions.
Thank you very much, City Manager Bernie. Any questions or comments for the City Manager? Sure. Our Finance Chair, Councilmember Lisa Parshley.
Well, I've been through seven budgets, and I've watched this year unfold, and I think, Manny, thank you, you kind of put it, the words in my mouth, and I could thank everybody that the City Manager has, Joan and team, the directors and the managers of our departments and the staff. I mean, I know that the reason we are the city we are is because of the people that work here at every level, and I know that everybody came together for this budget. But what really impressed me was, in this really, really tough budget, and looking forward to 2026, is the fact that we did center the heart and the people in this, and no decision was made lightly, no, no decision was a dollar amount for a person that is at risk. And I'm gonna give a lot of credit to our City Manager. The heart of the staff starts with you and your caring. And I know that this one has been a tough one for you, and it's been an honor to have worked with you through these years on this, and in particular, this budget. And I know the city is gonna be able to do it in the coming year to figure out 2026 and beyond, because you're gonna be, as we would use in a nautical term, at the helm. So, I'm just impressed with how difficult this was, and the fact that we got what we got, and we maintained the heart of Olympia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parshley. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I've had seven Finance Directors.
True.
Including Sean.
And actually, can I just lump Sean in there? I miss Sean, sorry I missed you there, Sean. Sean taking over his interim in the, in the meantime, has just done, just a great job of keeping us together, so thank you, Sean.
Yeah, so I, I'm just reflecting on my 15th budget, and I, I don't really always do that, but it's, the City Manager started it, and people are thinking that through. My first budget, I sat, you know, I was running for office, and I, the year I ran, I got sworn in upon certification. So I had, I came in in December, got sworn in, misdemeanor while my daughter was born, and then came back and wrote on the budget, and then went home for the end of the year. And, so I got to touch that budget, but when I watched the budget balancing from a chair over here, arm wrestling would have been a more eloquent way to balance the budget. Like, I am not kidding. Like, literal flip chart, City Manager, hollering from the dais, adjusting, amending, I mean, it was a little bit more, there was a little bit of decorum still, but, but it was not what we would expect right now from the world-class city of Olympia. And I'm really impressed. Like, this is easily in my top three most difficult budgets financially. I think this is my best budget process-wise. Like, it feels really good from start to finish. We've had awesome dialogue, we agree, or we agree to disagree, and we just keep moving forward to get to the point where we're taking care of as many people as we can. And I, I want to quote Manny, too, because it's, because of that creativity and innovation that is the culture of the city of Olympia, like, we just do cool things. And even in really hard times, we figure it out, and we rally, and the community comes and tells us we're doing something wrong, and we stop, and we think about it, and we, we pivot in the direction that they're telling us to go. And it's because of our staff, and our council does a pretty good job to stay nautical, keeping our hand on the tiller, but, but it's because we have amazing staff that, that put, and I think the City Manager said this earlier, like, like, it takes a lot of care and feeding for seven council members, but the care and feeding of seven of us is actually the community voice, right? Like, so we, we are standing as 52,000 people here, and I think that's the, or 55, thank you, I want to make sure the size is right. But standing here representing 55,000 people is, is no small task, and because of our staff, understanding that that is our role, we're able to have a really strong budget process. I, I believe unlike many other cities, like, there are so many cities out there where this is a, an, less than pleasant relationship. And we've agreed that even when we disagree, we keep it above board, we do the right thing, and we're professional, and that's how we get great budgets and, and great outcomes. So, I'm super proud of this. While, I'm really sad for the five people that are struggling with their jobs still, and I, I'm glad that we have until February, because I know there will be other vacancies, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from council? Mayor Protem, win. Do you have comments? Sorry, Councilmember Parshley.
I have a process question. So, is this a good time?
Not yet. So, I just want to say thank you, City Manager Bernie, and thank you to every single city employee in the chambers tonight, and those who aren't here. This, at least at my time, obviously, has been the most difficult budget. I, I see this at, really as a model, as an example. I mean, you are the most senior city manager in, in our county now, and I imagine that they might come knocking on the door in the future about, what did you do? Lessons learned. This is a really impressive effort to get here and balance all of these priorities in a way that doesn't even touch the Tier 2 cuts that were proposed, which were things like affordable housing, and climate change, and public safety with police and fire, and, you know, all of these different areas that we didn't want to touch, and that the community was very clear that they wanted us to prioritize. And so somehow, we managed to get here with a budget in front of us tonight that does not reduce any of those primary services in our community. And to that, I'm extremely grateful to all of you for those efforts, and to be here tonight. I want to thank the Finance Committee. I know it's mostly your work to get us here as well, and going through the analysis of, you know, all of the things that are being proposed in the various aspects of the budget. And so I just thank you for being, in, in many ways, sort of representative of council. I'm sure there are times where you have to think about capturing our voice and what we think as well, before things come before all seven of us. And so, just appreciate your efforts and your representation on the committee as well for, for the council, and ultimately, for the community. And I'm really, really just struggling with knowing that this is not entirely a celebration, that, you know, we, we have some, there are some long-lasting effects to some of our employees as a result of taking action tonight. And I just kind of really want to say that I, it's just a really, really unfortunate thing, and I'm really grateful that we're still thinking about what we'll do to help support them, whether that means they remain here at the city of Olympia, or they move on to somewhere else. And I hope they know that this council has really, really struggled with having to, to be part of making this decision tonight. But nevertheless, we have an entire community to care for as well, and so with that in mind, we will, we will move on. And I just hope that in future years, we can recall all of the things we did right at this particular time, because I know we're not quite out of the woods when it comes to the budget. But for now, we can take a little breath over the holiday season, and, and really reflect on what a just monumental moment this has been for all of us here at the city. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So, with that, I believe Mayor Protem, you had a process question.
Yes, eloquent words, everyone. I shan't try to follow. I guess I would ask our, our city attorney, how, if one was interested, one being me, interested in voting to approve almost everything from this item, but pulling for option B for LTAC, how would I do that?
I can answer that, if you'd like, Mr. City Attorney.
Oh, usurped.
Yeah, so here's what I would recommend. So, I would, if I were you, I would move everything here minus LTAC, then move LTAC option A as its own motion, so then you can take that vote, and then if you want to vote against, or, then, then you'd have that option. Or make a motion for option B, and see if there's a second, however you want to do that, but I would make the motion that's in front of you for the operating budget utility rates and fees, special dedicated funds minus LTAC, and capital budget, and direct staff, and then, and then direct staff to bring them forward, pass that, and then take up LTAC as its own vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so Councilmember Parshley has the motion.
I move to approve the City Manager and Finance Committee's recommendation for the 2025 operating utilities and fees, special funds minus LTAC recommendations, and capital budget, and direct staff to prepare ordinance for city council consideration on December 10th with second reading on December 17th.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Can I process point of order?
Sure.
To the Mayor Protem, are you seeking a motion that would be favoring Option B? Or would you rather have us vote on Option A first?
I think vote on Option A. My spidey senses tell me that there might not be a second.
Yes, you just want to register your dissent. Yes, okay.
So I move to approve the recommended LTAC distribution and recommendation under, for their special funds portion of the general fund, with Option A, which includes the ability of the Lake Fair, after consultation with the city manager and the mayor, to potentially receive funding of $25,000.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes our business items for this evening. So we will move on to council reports. And I will begin to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Nothing significant to report. I do want to say that I, this morning, I had a really great conversation with several of our city staff because of the article I read in the paper today about the sheriff's office and the damage and injuries and deaths that have been caused in the last year because of deputies and the sheriff's pursuits after subjects, I guess, is the question. And I actually want to commend Chief Parker for having a great conversation with me and really filling me in on the city of Olympia's pursuit policy, which is awesome. Modern, thoughtful, like, why, when we decide and why we decide to pursue. And I also had a wonderful conversation with Debbie and just thinking about, what are our, what's, is there any angle for the city of Olympia to ask for a different outcome? And so I processed through, you know, a task for our auditor to audit pursuits that have happened in our city by other departments. I processed through calling a county commissioner and asking them if they would hire a police auditor. And I come back down to, there needs to be some public pressure around pursuit, around the sheriff's office. And I'd like to ask, Commissioner Mahia told me today that there had been a conversation with the mayors, and they were going to move towards a conversation around pursuit, and that that kind of fell away within the last year. And so she thought there might be an opportunity for the three mayors to bring that conversation back to the county. I personally would like the city council to write a letter to the sheriff and the county commissioners telling them about our pursuit policy. Because I think the disconnect, and I'd like to learn more if I'm wrong, but the disconnect I'm seeing in the story is the reason for the accidents and injuries and death is because of the state law around pursuit. But the state law says, don't pursue. So largely. And so we're getting a much worse outcome and an excuse that is not the reason for that outcome. And I really, I know that we don't have very much control, but I'm in a position where I'd like to at least say something publicly, because people are dying on our streets at the hands of police. And the challenge for me is that pursuit, unless there's contact, is not use of force. And so I'm just thinking about this, like, if there's an escalation in a situation because of someone wearing a uniform and carrying a gun, it's very similar when you turn on your lights and you start chasing someone, right? And it escalates the situation, but it's not reviewed as use of force. And so I know that there's a little bit of a conversation there. I'm really happy with what we're doing in the city. And I don't know if I need an outcome today, because I'm just babbling at this point. But maybe think about it, Mayor, and talk to your colleagues at the other cities about how we might unify with a request or a question.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Cooper. I do recall having some sort of conversation around that. I didn't initially, because it's been, that's how long ago it's been. But I do think that there is some interest in having a discussion around that. I, just some initial thoughts that I'm having in response to what you're saying is my understanding is that the sheriff was pretty engaged in lobbying the state to change the laws around pursuit. And so we do have different laws now, is my understanding, in terms of what that response looks like. And so what our policy is related to the state law, I would be interested in hearing that. But then also, how that compares to the practices of the sheriff's office and where exactly is the difference between the two. And so happy to, you know, write a letter to his office stating what those differences are, if there are any. And yeah, and represent our, at least this council in our city, if we all feel similarly. So thanks. Any additional questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Gilman.
Just to say, I agree. I share those concerns, and I would completely be in support of a letter or whatever other sort of engagement we might do to advocate for the sort of pursuit policy that we have successfully implemented here.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, I'm interested in exploring this. Thanks for bringing us to the fore. I would like to get more information. I would request more information for the full council of what is the current state law. I would even ask, what was the state law, if there was a recent change? What is Olympia's policy? And then I'm sure on Olympia's policy, it would say the date in which the policy takes place. And, you know, so how long has it been in place? And then also, what is the county's policy? And a little bit, not to make it too long, but also some information on, you had mentioned some, even some deaths, some injuries, but also some deaths. So if we could get any information on that, that would be great.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpool.
I agree to writing a letter and seeing where else we can go from here. Because if we're going to do any more working relationship with sheriff's office on any other needs, including the jail, we need to get these other priorities straightened out, so.
Thank you. And Councilmember Partially.
I went last intentionally, because my reports come next. I happen to have been privy with some conversations today at the legislature. There is discussion about the initiative that they passed through and the adjustments that could be made. So my recommendation would be to potentially add this to our legislative agenda, because there is actually a great deal of conversations going on around it. And unfortunately for Thurston County, our sheriff has made this aware to the entire state and the legislature is aware of it. So there was conversations about what could be done and how to amend the initiative that was passed through. So the law did get changed last year, and the reason they passed it through was so they could amend it. So my strong suggestion would be to put this on the legislative agenda, write the letter, because that could be included with any discussion with legislators in sense of our kind of position on this whole thing. And I'm particularly upset about this as well, because one of the deaths occurred within the city limits due to a chase that started outside of the city limits. And I, it's, I do believe it is a weapon. In Europe, when you drive a car through a crowd, it is considered a lethal weapon, the car is. So we should be looking at the same for the police officers. And it's just sad that our county has that kind of attention statewide in one year. So thank you for bringing that up. One of the things, the only thing I have to report is Finance Committee. And I just want to really thank my Finance Committee themselves. It's been a great year on conversations and thoughtful points. And I think, I really do believe you brought, helped bring forward recommendations that were far better than if you had been there, obviously. But I really, I really do want to thank you. The only thing that didn't get reported out for Finance was we went through the BNO tax titles, and we got those recommended. And I believe we'll be seeing them in the future. I would like to make one statement about BNO taxes. I have been very interested in, over seven years, finding the exemption that will work on smaller micro businesses to allow them not to have to pay, especially if we're going to be going into an audit. And then to consider potentially some of the options brought forward in the future on one of our budget balancing things in the future would be to potentially increase on the higher grossing businesses and then ensuring that those BNO taxes do eventually come back and help our economic development group. Because if you're a taxpayer, that's nice to know that your taxes are going to what you're paying for. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Partially. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Partially? Seeing none, thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I don't really have a report so much as to something specifically to Councilmember Gilman and the mayor. It's not new news. I'm so happy to serve with both of you on the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee. As you both know, we had our, I think, our final meeting. Who knows? We do a lot of special meetings. It's our final special meeting, and before that was our final regular meeting. And it's just been, it's been such a welcomed, though often very long, but such a welcomed time each one Wednesday of the month to really dig in and all of our special meetings of having, I think, the really tough job of appointing members to our advisory bodies. A lot of goodness out in the community. And we've even, this past year, we've even dug deeper to not just doing the, of course, completing the regular business of the committee, but also kind of restructuring, you know? Is it working currently? How's it going? What types of guidance do staff need? Staff liaisons to advisory bodies? What makes sense for future years? When do we do what? You know, you were all there for it. But yeah, I just, yeah, I just so appreciate both of you. And yeah, and I look forward to next year, hopefully together.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Feel the same way about you as chair of our committee. You've been doing a great job, so thank you. Any questions or comments for the Mayor Protem? All right, seeing none. I'll actually go next, because I forgot to start with myself. I don't have much of anything to report. Just that Mayor Protem will be presiding over the December 3rd study session. I'll be excused on that evening, so. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Deputy Chief Parker's radio is cut over today to the new Thurston County Emergency Radio Network. So if a train falls off the tracks, we'll be able to talk to JBLM and Pierce County Agencies. Good news. So that happened today, yeah. On last Wednesday, I attended a Thurston County Refugee Resettlement Celebration. And it was about 100 newcomers to our community and about an equal number of volunteers, hosts, language buddies, and friends. And it was a potluck from around the world. It was amazing. But I just wanted to celebrate that we're one of 10 locations in Washington State that opened up to begin receiving refugees a year and a half ago. We've had about 100, I think it's about 190 people now. And the goal for this coming year, assuming the rules stay the same, is to have a larger number, about 130 people in the next year. But it was a welcome event and really good people from all around the world. Last night was the Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. And we had, most of the evening was a comprehensive plan update. And there were two suggestions that I noted that I want to pursue. One was, which chapter reflects our regional cooperation and regional plans? We've, in the last few years, we've really added sort of a whole nother level of intergovernmental work that's been regional coordination. And how is that reflected in the comp plan? That was something, I'll do a little, maybe it's in there already and I don't know it, but it'd be nice to sort of codify that within the comp plan. And then the other suggestion was more specific, but was interesting to me. And that was to consider strengthening in the public participation chapter, the measures of progress, sort of our dashboard kinds of work. So those were suggestions that I took away from the meeting. And I enjoyed the committee work this year and really appreciate the hard work and the robust discussions. So, yeah. Thank you, chairs, both you chairs. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Seeing none. Councilmember Vanderpool.
I don't have a ton to report on. You know, there's a couple items. So I, over the last week, and I brought this up in agenda setting, I've had quite a few members of the public reach out and ask a question I didn't really think would be related to local government. And that's the idea of, like, the fear of not having, and, well, they brought up civil rights. They brought up, do, what do we do in a situation when there aren't civil rights being enforced on the federal level? And I point to a lot of what we do in the community. I point to a lot of our wonderful nonprofits. I pointed to what we've done as a council. And this is a big question. This is something I never really considered. What do we do as a sanctuary city? What do we do beyond a sanctuary city when we have, and in your future? And there's a lot of people that have asked, what do we do in volunteering? So I pointed to some of our committees' assignments, but there are quite a few people out there that are fairly nervous. And there's an anxiety around that, and it's understandable. And so I really want to know, you know, we, there's a lot, I have a lot of thoughts on that and what we could do policy-wise, but I just, I'm bringing this up as something that we all can think about going forward into the next year. I don't want to be the negative person up here, but I just wanted to bring that up, because there's quite a few people who've mentioned that. I'm continuing, another item is I'm continuing to hear people talk to me, reproach me about workers' rights. And I know we're moving forward with that, but I just want to mention that that is a continued conversation in the public. There's a continued need to have that conversation and interest. I'm like, when are we doing this? And I keep coming back around to it. So, yeah, those are the two items.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool. Questions or comments? Councilmember Gilman.
Councilmember Vanderpool, I'm going to meet the first week of December here at City Hall with a part of the Strengthening Sanctuary Group, who brought our Sanctuary City ordinance. And I would invite you to join. We'll see if we can coordinate. And so, and I'm sure, as all of you have great, that I've had a number of meetings over the last 10 days with all different sorts of constituency groups who are also having all this wondering. And I want to appreciate what City Manager Bernie said to me earlier today. Well, how about if we just get up every day and we do our work and we hold our values? And that's what we can do, is just keep doing our work. So I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Gilman. I, yes to that. Thank you for doing that work with bringing folks together to discuss the Sanctuary City status. It's strange, because in a lot of ways, we're a target for having that status. And so we'll need to be ready. So I'm glad that you. So, I'm glad that you are having that forum of getting folks together. We did share, we did discuss a little bit about this inquiry from Councilmember Vanderpool around civil rights earlier today and agenda setting, and we had discussed some of the actions that we could take around it. One involving our sanctuary city status and what we're doing there in that space. Glad to know that there's already something underway. But in addition to that, there's other things that we were discussing in terms of communicating out to the, to the, to the community around, there is a public-facing sanctuary city page on our website. And so we are putting together some ways that we can communicate various resources that exist out into the community for those who are inquiring about those, and also thinking of ways that we might leverage our Social Justice and Equity Commission as it relates to the work that Councilmember Vanderpool is bringing up. So, yeah, there will be ongoing development in that aspect. And thank you for bringing it up now and earlier today because people, I think, the closer we get to the new year, I think people are getting more and more anxious. So, thank you. All right. Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, and I think, just because we're thinking ahead, a lot of that angst between 2016 and 2020 played out right here in these chambers. So, it'd be worth like, kind of thinking back through those four years a little bit and what, you know, whether there's any predictability in that work as we look ahead, just to say all that.
Sure. Thank you. Last but not least, City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. One, just to put a bow on the Strengthening Sanctuaries, Chief Allen has also offered to meet with them just to reassure them that we're not changing our policies in terms of how we operate as a department in our jails and our policies and practices. So, we offered to meet with them as well. And then a couple of just other items. I sent you all an email earlier today. There's a groundbreaking tomorrow for the Parthea. It's a historic tugboat. It's happening at 10:00 a.m. right down by the farmer's market, and I don't know if there's anybody there inviting me or someone from council. I don't know if any of you are available. Debbie Sullivan is, can go tomorrow, and so she's willing to go and represent us and hold a shovel tomorrow if you'd like. But I wanted to check with some of you first to see if any of you are available at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
And I'm also not available, just for the record. And I think we can get back to you on that later.
Well, it's tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., so.
Right. I mean later, as in like, not from the dais, but after.
I'm going home after. So, you, I mean, you can call me later, I might not answer. I'm just trying to get, it's happening tomorrow, so I've just seen if there's anybody just quickly could raise their hand. If not, then Debbie's willing to step in.
Sure. Mayor Protam Wynn.
Sorry.
If I have the council's support in this, the one thing I would say, because I've always thought that Debbie Sullivan represents Olympia well, is we definitely want a picture of the shovel. You and the shovel, please. She's got to verify that you were there.
Okay, Debbie's going to go represent us tomorrow, so thank you.
All right. Wow, you really wanted, that made like a business decision. Whoever's organizing that event, make sure they thank you.
Yeah. And then lastly, just a fun item. So, it's that time of year, again, Ole on Ice is here. I think most of you have seen it kind of pop up over the coming weeks. So, starting this Friday, the 22nd, at 2:30 down on the Isthmus, Ole on Ice is up and running. I think there's a VIP night that's on Thursday night for councilmembers, so if you want to strap on some skates on Thursday night and try it out first, you're welcome. But for anyone in the community that has questions about scheduling, pricing, and pre-sale tickets, you can go to oleonice.com. Welcome to the holiday season with Ole on Ice. And thanks to our Parks Department for all their work to get it up and running again.
All right. Well, any questions or comments for the City Manager? Seeing none, I believe this is our final meeting before the Thanksgiving holiday. So, I just want to wish our community a very safe and happy Thanksgiving, and also the following day is Native American Heritage Day. So, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.